The first thing we'll do is have the roll call.
The ladies.
President.
Harold Jorgensen. Barry Wagner.
President.
Robert Schiller. Jason Alders.
Present.
Kelly Farrell.
Here.
Kristen Moan.
Here.
Jeff Pavan.
Here.
Liz Stockman.
Here.
Okay, the next thing is we'll have the meeting policy.
Please register your attendance on the signing sheet on the back table. Copies of the agenda are also available on the back table. The agenda as printed or amended will be followed so all necessary and needed actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be addressed. The agenda may be amended by proper motion. Comments from the floor are welcome during public hearings. Those wishing to comment must register on the floor comment sheet on the back table. When comments from the floor are made, individuals must first be recognized by the chairman, clearly state your name and address for the record, allow no more than three minutes to state your comments or concerns. Please turn all cell phones off or on silent. Thank you.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda we're going to approve are meant tonight's meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2019. Would somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Commission Alders made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Commission, Commissioner Pearl seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we'll do is approve the meeting minutes of June 25th, 2019. Would somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Morals. Moan.
We've got one week.
Somebody second this?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Alders seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the next thing, what's on the agenda is a public hearing and we'll call the public meeting to order. And the first thing we're going to do is read what the public hearing is about. The public hearing is a continuing meeting. It's a request by John Wagner and Winston Holding LLC, pin number 21, dash 33, dash 25, dash 33, dash 0015, at 7900 Old Viking Boulevard for the following three applications. A rezoning request map amendment to change the existing C1 commercial zoning to 1C. Industrial zone is compliance with Section 1112 of the City Code. There's also going to be an interim use permit to allow outdoor storage in association with multiple builders, general contractor business on this plus or minus six acre property in compliance with Section 11-3-9.D.D. 4 and Section 1110 of the City Code. Also, there'd be a variance from the 100-foot yard requirement of Section 11-4, dash 17. Then there's going to be another variance from the non-metal billing materials required of Section 11-5, dash 3 to allow all finished metal on the east side or rear of the proposed building. Okay, we're going to ask the city planner at this time to present her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've talked about in the past, the chair stated this is a continuation of a public hearing. We talked about the rezoning, a portion of the property from C1 to I1 to accommodate the warehouse portion of the structure. It is a joint office warehouse facility. We've also discussed the interim use permit required for the outdoor storage area. New to the discussion is the variance for the required 100-foot buffer, which is a screening requirement of the commercial industrial zoning districts, which abut residential uses. In this case, because of the age of this parcel and its irregular configuration, staff feels there's justification there. There is what we have to find as a practical difficulty in using this site the way it was intended with that 100-foot buffer in place. So in finding a practical difficulty, what we need to do is look at whether what the applicant is proposing is a reasonable use. If we can determine that along with the review of the zoning criteria that were outlined in the packet, then there is justification for issuing that variance. The final variance was noticed as an option to leave kind of some, I guess, options open for the building materials being considered. So the east end is in question with currently being 100 percent metal and requiring 50 percent non-metal because of it's adjacent to the residential zone. The property's got residential on three sides, again making it unique and not something caused by the applicant. So this variance would allow us either to a) waive that building material requirement on the east end or take that square footage that would normally be required there and apply it to the north side or some other side of the building. Lastly, with regard to the review period, we've extended our initial 60-day review period one time, bringing us to 120 days. Mr. Wagner has authorized us to extend that through the city council meeting in August. So we would need to make a decision on that date. The normal or the scheduled expiration of that 120 days is on August 2nd. So as to avoid a special meeting, he has graciously allowed us to consider that on our regular city council meeting date. This was the original site plan submitted. The revised site plan has changed the building orientation slightly to this angled position, thereby meeting required setback from Nowland Boulevard, and slightly reconfiguring the parking areas and access to the rear yard. Everything else pretty much remained the same. We did shift ponding a little bit. There was more ponding in the northeast corner. Initially, he's pushed all that kind of up in the northwest corner and will create sort of an aesthetic using that stormwater. So having said that, I think the best thing to do, and given the fact that we've talked about this previously, I think the best thing to do would be to go one by one through the packet. I've outlined everything by number and have identified what the issues are. So if that's okay, Mr. Chair, I'll let you kind of lead the way on guiding us through this packet, starting with on page two of the report addendum. So we would be, we have, the first consideration would be the rezoning. The first consideration is the rezoning. The property currently zoned C1, which is commercial. And previously, the consensus was to leave the front portion of the property commercial and the rear portion would be rezoned to industrial to accommodate that outdoor storage and the warehousing. Warehousing is not a permitted use in the commercial district. So our office does recommend approval. I think that is a reasonable request. All the rezoning criteria can be met as were outlined in the initial planning report. Does anybody have any discussion about that item?
No, it's a non-discussed, right?
Right. It's the same. Okay. Item two is regarding interim use permit for the outdoor storage. Mr. Wagner just doesn't propose to store anything out of the ordinary, simply equipment, materials, and machinery related to the general contractor use. There is a condition in the findings effect which states that all items stored there must be related to the business. The question related to outdoor storage is we need to define the screening. He has submitted a revised landscape plan. And that is. Jay. Is it Jay? So intertwined into the outdoor storage request done is a variance in buffer zone. So basically, the ordinance states that the screening has to be to the city's satisfaction. There was significant conversation with the neighbor, Jerry Mevison, who owns the property directly east of here on Old Viking Boulevard. And I attempted to make contact with the property owners on Nowland Boulevard, Florentines, I believe the name is, and dropped a copy of the report there yesterday with my card. I haven't heard any questions or concerns in that regard. Mr. Wagner does show trees along that, the rear of that property on Nowland Boulevard to the north of that land. He's got an open green area that as a septic that we had determined previously was a good buffer in and of itself. In addition to that, he'll have some maple tree and some shrubbery as well as some decorative landscaping along the office in that location. And then in talking with Mr. Mevison, I outlined in the report the three things that were requested by Mr. Mevison. And I know that he spoke with Mr. Wagner and is that okay?
I was actually here yesterday in that period.
Oh, good. Okay. Do you want to share anything about that meeting?
The meeting went real well. There's one area in the back that has, you know, he's got thick vegetation or trees behind his house there. There's one area that doesn't have, some trees have died recently, so he'd like a couple of trees filled in there. Yeah, his biggest concern was drainage, that front area that floods for him every year on those spare lot western of his house. And we had to take care of that for him in our variance plan. Otherwise, he was pretty happy with everything. The main thing he really wanted to have happen was to take care of the drainage issue that he does every spring when the property floods.
And he was happy with the six-foot fence on the lot line because he didn't want to have to trim around things or to have you go on that side and have a different cutting cycle than what he wanted? Okay, so the things that were outlined in here are still applicable then. So without hearing from the other adjacent landowner.
Here is one representative.
Oh, is there? Oh, I'm so sorry.
We just got the packet and I go this way. We just got home from work, so we haven't even had a chance to look at it yet.
Well, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have or...
Yeah, my husband, my daughter's six. My husband's across the street with her, but we gotta come over quick. I just got home.
Oh, great. Thanks for coming. Do you have any concerns or questions for us?
He was looking it over right now. I don't think he's had anything yet.
Okay. You've got those trees behind you, but we were talking about adding a few more just for sound and privacy reasons. Does that sound okay? And then I guess to your north, pretty much would be open space. So what you're going to see from your house is a finished side of the building here. Let's see, well, it's all like a stucco finish with stone on which faces south. So that's basically what you'll see. So this whole front office portion is non-metal with the exception of these shakes up here.
Just to clarify, Liz, it's set back far enough that the large arbivides that are on the north of her property will block a lot of the building?
And the septic will too, right?
Septic, and it's not a mound, is it?
I think it's going to have to be a mound. But it'll, you know, it'll be landscaped in, so it'll, you know, it'll look more like a berm, you know, than a mound, so.
Because I have a question on the east side of the Florentine property. There's a, arbivides and alternate arbivides. What's the, the two with the X's in them? What does that signify?
It kind of remains to be seen. I mean, we're open to whatever somebody would want to see there. You know, really, whatever kind of trees that's the area right behind here. You'd get some pretty thick trees behind your house now, and this would be additional trees behind that. So we're open to whatever somebody would want there.
There's a fence there also.
Whatever is going to work the best in that spot, you know.
There's a fence there as well, though?
Yeah, the fence would be offset 15 feet from the property line and then additional old trees would go in that 15-foot.
Maybe there are several types of arbivides and different colors.
I believe we would need some help in just what to use there and what's best utilized there, what would work the best there in the long run.
It's actually a good spot for arbivides because they're not going to get the hot west sun and very much of the south sun. They can be subject to some winter burn and this is actually an ideal situation. They do well in partial shade, so.
And the reason, I guess the reason I threw those two alternate ones in there is just to break it up a little bit so as to always say, I thought maybe there's a variation out or something, you know, that could work with some of those things.
Does the commission have any thoughts on the tree types there or are you okay with the arbivide, which would be, you know, our year-round evergreen? Everybody's good with that as shown then? Eight, eight arbivides?
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Does that sound okay? How do you feel about what you're seeing here?
It's a holiday gas station.
Yeah.
Also, I have a site that's on a gas station or an apartment solar company.
Realistically, it will be a lot quieter than a typical commercial use and have less cars coming and going than a retail use would, so that is positive as far as the residences go.
Yeah, we only have four people in the office, so, or five if I'm there. But I have the tagings.
So the fence looks like Mr. Perkins' fence to the south of view. And then the rock pillars, the stone pillars, and this is the finish on part of the building as well. So, so the 100-foot buffer is shown here in yellow along residential areas. So we're proposing fence and landscaping in that area. We've defined some things in trade basically that Mr. Mevison is looking for. We've outlined those in the findings of fact. And I will also specify the 15-foot setback on the Florentine side with the arbivides. And then Mr. Wagner will submit a more detailed landscape plan as it gets closer to building permit approval to ensure that he's incorporating the total number of plans that's required and then in, you know, in compliance with this plan approved, assumingly approved by you were recommended for approval tonight. So let's see here, go back to our list. So variance from 100-foot buffer, defining the alternative landscaping and screening I just mentioned. It allows for added usable space on the Wagner site. And then I guess last but not least, let's talk about the materials on the exterior of the building, specifically that east end. As the chart shows in your report, all sides of the building are meeting the requirements except for that east side. So because he's got more non-metal than required on the south side, we apply that excess to the north and north side and some from the west. So the question is, you know, given, given the existing trees, the screening, development setback away from that east side, what is your feeling about that, the materials on that end? The fence does go all the way up to that stormwater pond on the far east side of the property and then meets up with Mr. Perkins' fence further south of that. So your options are to waive the building material requirement that is not metal or apply that 910 square feet to the north side of the building. Let's go back to the view. This is the north side, no, this is the north side here that faces Old Viking Boulevard. So the front is all non-metal. We don't count the roof. We just look at the wall space and the doors don't typically count. So we would exclude windows as a higher quality material. But right now, basically, 100 percent metal on this rear portion. You know, you've got a six-foot fence. How high are the sidewalls, do you know offhand, of the building?
18.
So you've got, what, 12 feet that sticks up a little bit from beyond the fence. You know, I don't know if just an accent of struck rock or some, something up above here.
Are you still planning to do the pillars and the rock?
The pillars are, yeah, he's got it.
And I was trying to hope that dressing up, you know, with the pillars and the fence, I think it's really going to set off the front nicely.
Right.
And then the metal in the fence will either be the same as the building or accent of the building. We don't kind of envision it to be the same color as the building. You know, and then the pillars will match the stone on the building and the stone on the corners. So I was, you know, I'm thinking and using my money more wisely to dress it up in other
He is going above and beyond with the fence quality and type as well as in all those pillars.
Chair?
I would waive it.
I don't feel, I don't feel that it has to be applied anywhere else personally.
Yeah.
It's a nice building. I mean, you could say that the stone is being used on the fence instead.
Exactly. And you're dressing it up where you can see it, no one's going to see it on the backside.
I agree.
So one, two, three, four.
Yes, I agree as well.
Yep. Okay.
Dale?
So then that would be a variance for the non-metal on the east end. And a variance for the 100-foot buffer in lieu of the specified materials. A rezoning, a portion of the property from the rear portion from C1 to I1, and interim use permit to allow the outdoor storage as shown on the plan. I believe that is it. Anyone want to make a motion then to that effect?
Well, we've got a couple of things we should cover first.
Oh, okay.
We've got to clarify, have the clerk clarify the mailing.
Yes.
Everything is mailed, everything is legally publicized. Okay, and you want a motion to...
I just specified the four items.
Liz, you should close the public hearing first.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Close your public hearing if there are no more comments.
Okay. Is there any more questions from the Planning and Zoning?
I have one question. That, what's that additional onto the main building there?
On the far left side?
Yes.
It's an enclosed lean-to area for lack of something better. It would be open on the end. It's additional storage.
Just covered storage.
Covered storage, yes.
Okay, covered.
It would have a slab in there and, you know, be covered. The front side would be walled off toward the street.
Like you see it to match the...
The east end would be open and the south side.
Okay. Are there any questions, other questions that the Planning and Zoning might have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Liz, I guess I'm wondering about this, on the very north edge up here.
Mm-hmm. Are you looking, he's looking at the landscape.
I'm looking at the landscape plan. I guess I'm wondering if that fence we pulled back a little bit because that tree looks like it's going to be out in the pond out area, I guess, out there, just sort of worrying about. Do they have adequate space up there?
Yeah, it's, it'd be, well be centered on that pond or ditch area, but it would be right on the edge.
Okay.
You know, we fit it in as best we can.
Yes, on the uphill side of a slope.
I didn't know if we could pull it back a little bit, I guess, to give this couple of trees some room up there, but cannot be in the pond area for maples.
Yeah, it wouldn't take much, you know, probably five to eight feet further.
Are you seeing there's a pond up in that corner also?
There is a, up here you see kind of a ditch.
Well, storage area up there.
It's a ditch that runs under the driveway here and the majority of the plumbing is in the front and then in the rear here.
And now to take care of the neighbors, the back pond here then?
Well, some of his goes south, but up here is where Mr. Wagner is volunteering to solve the drainage problem and then presumably send some of that water up through this ditch here and then over to the pond.
Yeah, the first idea there would be to get permission from the committee. I mean, Jerry feels that that ditch is supposed to drain west to the corner, but doesn't currently, he thinks there is no culvert under the approach. He said it's headed to the west there to the corner.
Oh, I see.
So, but it wouldn't take a whole lot, you know, draining activities to regrade that ditch. We will definitely have a culvert under the approach, so the thought is is that it would be drained through the... The thought is is that it would be drained through the county ditch. I mean, a backup method would be to run it through our system. I don't see a problem with that either, so.
Okay, you do call to re, remove and replace that driveway culvert, it looks like, okay?
There's supposed to be one there, but there's so much grass, you can't tell.
They silt in, don't leave much sometimes.
So I would say, yeah, this, Old Viking, you know, was turned over to the city. So when you get a driveway permit for your culvert and everything, work with Joe on, Joe Glaze is a maintenance supervisor on that grade and he's good at I.
So isn't a county road anymore? County doesn't have jurisdiction of that.
That's township road.
Correct, the city road now.
Yeah.
So that would be...
That makes it easier.
A little easier, yep. Just this side, and you're really not doing any work in the right of way of Nowland Boulevard, right?
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Wagner, do you, so do your pond, does it have an overflow to it that ties into the county line?
Yes, controlled outlet.
Does that tie into the county system or?
It goes, well, it's supposed to then head north across Viking. Yes, it's got a controlled outlet that, you know, will dump into a culvert that goes across Viking to the north.
Are there any more questions that the planning and zoning would like to ask you? If not, we'll close the public hearing then. Public hearing's closed. Now we'll act upon it.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request to change the existing lot from a C1 to industrial zoning on the back portion of that property. I'll make a motion to approve the interim use permit to outdoor storage with the, with the exceptions outlined in page two with regards to screening, neighbor Jerry, and the plan for shrubs and trees. To approve the hundred-foot buffer variance with review later on closer to the build process from shrubs and approved shrubs with Liz's team. And finally, approve the waiver of the stone requirements on the east side of the building due to the fact that the pillars and the screening and the stone on the front side of the building make up for that amount.
Okay, Commissioner Alder's made this motion. Do we have a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Moen, second it. Now we'll have discussion. Anybody want to add anything to this, what these things is in this motion? Are you satisfied with it, Liz?
Sounds good.
Okay. I mean, there's no more discussion, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yes, we'll go to the city council and we'll act upon it.
August 13.
August 13.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
When do you plan to start?
We may start some, depends how the rest of the approvals go. We may start site work later this year. There's a slight chance, 20, 30% chance, we'll start this year. Otherwise, right away in the spring.
Okay, there's nothing else on agenda. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Moen made the motion adjourned. Does somebody want to second this?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Alder's seconded this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I think that's a record.
All right.
That was a record.
Nice job, Dale.